Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Councilwoman Perkins-Agusty, Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Broga, Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Sedan.
Here.
Councilman Maza.
Here.
President Gold.
Yes, seven members present, Madam Clerk. This is a regular conference of the City Council as incorporated in the annual meetings announced of 2013, which were filed in the City Court's office, posted on the building board on December 27, 2012, and sent to the Star Legend on news review in compliance with the provision of open public meeting law of New Jersey. At this time, I have public speaking. Any resident or taxpayer like to address City Council in any matter, please step forward, take your name and address for the record. Once again, any resident or taxpayer like to address City Council in any matter, please step forward, take your name and address for the record. Seeing none, closed this portion of the meeting. Before we get into the regular meeting, I would like to address a couple of things. I think I hear footsteps. I'd like to address Councilwoman Perkins-Agusty.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. President.
A couple of things, ladies and gentlemen. And I was last meeting room. It was asked, question was asked about the fishing derby. Let you note that it will be, the city will not sponsor the fishing derby because the police department weren't doing it for the city. The question was asked if the city would sponsor it, but the city will not. The fishing derby will be sponsored by the Portuguese Club, which will be held this Saturday at Wanika Park, it's still from 9:00 to 12:00. All you need, you would just be there, show up, fill out a form, doesn't cost you anything, and catch the fish, and throw them back. It's gonna be a fun-filled day. The Portuguese Club, I have attended several times before, and they need to have a great time there when they're there.
Normally, the bus, the bus takes somebody to pizza. I think I've seen it in the past.
In the past, I didn't ask the question about that.
That is correct, yeah.
Yeah, in the past, I don't know, I didn't ask that question about the transportation, but I just know, I did find out that the Portuguese Club will be sponsoring the fishing derby on Saturday at Wanika Park. For those that are interested. The other thing is, as you know, just something different one thing about our ABC meeting, it was a case that held over for our next meeting, May 20th, and we had, you know, we had a tape that was held over, we wanted to view. So I'm asking you, we do it on the sixth, on the same day, say at 6:30, would I give enough time? Say at 6:30.
It's a Monday, right?
It's a Monday.
Before the meeting, meanwhile.
We want to watch, we'll view, I'll get it set up, we'll reach at 6:30, we'll view that tape, and then we'll move on. Okay? Okay, all right. And that's it. So I set it up, and we'll meet 6:30. If you guys, just back up, for the fishing derby, you want to call Sergio Granado, his telephone number is 908-875-6098. That's 908-875-6098. That's for fishing derby, if you got questions. Okay? Thank you.
Letter dated April 24, 2013, from His Honorable Mayor, advising that he's making the following appointments to the board of the trustees of the Free Public Library. Mr. Eloy J. Delgado, Elizabeth, to serve as a trustee, to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Idella LaPierre. Ms. Ann P. Russell, Elizabeth, to serve as a trustee, replacing Mr. Delgado as an alternative who recently filled an expired term.
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated April 30, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting that Your Honorable Body pass a resolution declaring August 6, 2013, National Night Out to be held at Carverett Park from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated April 30, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Security Guard, Inc., trading as Tri-County Security, Vineland, New Jersey, for the furnishing of security guard services for the Department of Public Works, Division of Public Buildings, Municipal Court, and any other department requiring the said service for a period of two years in an amount not to exceed $250,000.
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated May 1, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Cherry Valley Tractor Sales, Marlton, New Jersey, for the purchase of ground equipment for the Department of Public Works, under the Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission contract, in the amount of $18,254.99.
Any question? I'm gonna put that, before we go on, I'm gonna put that on, before we go on to the next one, can we go back to the security guard? Don, if you know, I got some information about how much they make an hour for armed guards, and also if they're not armed. I want to know how many hours they work a week, is it 40 hours a week?
Sure, Mr. President. There will be an unarmed guard posted at the Municipal Court from Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 3:00 p.m.
8:00 to 3:00?
And Friday from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. for a total of 42 hours.
42 hours.
Two shifts there.
Okay.
And the armed guard will be posted at the marina every night from 8:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m.
8:00 to 6:00 p.m. Okay.
Which is 10 hours and 70 hours.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Round, that's on.
Letter dated May 1, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Garden State Office Systems and Equipment, Biscataway, New Jersey, to assist in moving four electric servers from one floor to another within the Elizabeth Municipal Court Building at 208 Conner Street, in the total amount of $26,140.
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated May 1, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Northeast Auto and Truck Parts, LLC, Division of Capital Supply, Bayonne, New Jersey, for the purchase of automotive parts and accessories, to include but not limited to brakes, filters, and spark plugs, for the Department of Public Works, for the period April 25, 2013, through April 25, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $30,000.
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated May 3, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting that Your Honorable Body consider renewing a policy of insurance with James River Insurance Group, Richmond, Virginia, through the agent of record Hughes Pomer Associates, covering professional liability for the engineering staff, for the period May 10, 2013, through May 10, 2014, in a premium amount of $28,964.
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated May 6, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., Appleton, Wisconsin, for the furnishing of one 2013, or current model year, 2000 GPM pumper, and one 2013, or current model year, 100-foot rear mount aerial ladder truck, for the fire department, in the amount of
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated May 6, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting that Your Honorable Body consider renewing the contract for a second year with Highway Service Corp., Elizabeth, for police authorized towing and storage services for a period of one year commencing June 12, 2013, through June 11, 2014, with the option to renew for a third year under the same terms and conditions as the current contract.
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting to establish Chapter 5.100.225 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, to allow taxi cabs to install and utilize a credit card machine. Rates or fees associated therewith must first be authorized by the Chief License Inspector.
Any question? I just want to elaborate, I'm happy that the movement of the 21st century, where they can reuse credit cards to move through the system, because I think, you know, a lot of people don't like cash nowadays, they can jump in a cab and use a credit card, and a lot better, excuse me, a lot easier for them to do that. It's a great idea.
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting to establish Chapter 5.112.100 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, to exempt from the requirements of licensure under Chapter 5.112, any amusement kiddie ride or kiddie ride operator that is licensed by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs pursuant to NJAC 5 Colton 14A, that's one, et cetera.
Any question?
Is there an application, I guess, since the state's authorizing it?
Yeah.
Seems.
I mean, yeah, again, you know, we're way below a lot of other prices to other municipalities at some time. I'm happy to do it before I talk to the director.
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting that Your Honorable Body consider amending Chapter 5.100.220 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, specifically to increase the fares to meet the rising cost of fuel, insurances, and car maintenance. The last time rates were amended was five years ago.
Any question? I think we was part of that scale, we made up, so I'd like to see that there increased just a little bit, okay?
Mr. President, can you give us some time to review, so we could compare what kind of increase was done from five years ago to the...
Not necessarily. Now, if you look in the back, Councilman, if you look in the back, you see the catch, there's a catch in the back, see it? Remember us going over this hatchet out just four, five years ago, and hatch always breaks out, but mostly here. Here, so.
Okay.
Okay. Put it on.
Letter dated May 6, 2013, from the City Attorney, requesting a temporary construction easement and access agreement between County Union and City of Elizabeth, for the purpose of performing a geotechnical investigation in order to facilitate the design of the Midtown area western interceptor improvements for the installation and maintenance of combined sewers in Midtown.
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that additional grants may be appropriated in 2013 state fiscal year budget by budget amendments, Chapter 159.
Question?
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that transfers for the 2013 state fiscal year municipal sewer utility budgets may be necessary.
Any question?
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that Your Honorable Body consider approving a resolution to confirm the details of sale of general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount that is not known at this time, of the City of Elizabeth, to the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust and State of New Jersey, acting by and through the Department of Environmental Protection pursuant to the state fiscal year 2013 New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust financing program for funding the city's Third Avenue combined sewer modification project.
Any question? Put it on.
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting cancel unexpended balances to be returned to each respective capital improvement fund or credited to capital surplus, and unused debt authorizations may be canceled as per to the made-up list.
Any question?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I see that there is some road resurfacing money. About almost a year and a half ago, I have a request, Mr. Paperey, to repay, or have the contract to repay on Division Street and Franklin Street, in the area of the Senior Citizen Center there, the Housing Authority Building, just before it reached East Jersey Street. Right after that was paid, there were puddles, over puddles again, and I requested to be taken contracted at the court or whatever, to have repaid over again, we were still under the obligation, we were still under coverage of the contract. Now, just in case, this money could probably be used to re-patch or repay that section if the city didn't do anything with the contract. So can we send a letter to Mr. Paperey, find out whatever happened to that particular area?
To the last contract in the Division end up...
Right after was done, then we went through the winter and the spring, everything was puddles all over the place.
I can have them sort of direct it and question them, I don't know if the contract's still alive.
I'd be happy to look into it. I just want to make clear that the amount that's listed for road resurfacing here seems to be obligated already, but that doesn't mean that I can't make an inquiry.
Right.
I think that's what we're trying to do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. So other than that, we put this on, Mr.?
Yeah, he might, yeah.
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting a state fiscal year 2013 dedication by rider to the municipal budget for donations, acceptance of requests, and gifts from Drake College of Business to support the event Empowering Women for the 21st Century. Letter dated May 7, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer, requiring that Your Honorable Body review the city's quarterly budget revenues and appropriations for the 2013 state fiscal year third quarter, ending March 31, 2013.
Mr. President. Can you have whoever does the spreading to do a little bit big numbers, because they cannot be measured at this one, you know? My vision's already getting up there, but, I mean, I need a magnifying glass, does anybody realize with that?
Councilman, we'll send a little, make sure to make the press launch that, okay? Okay, we'll put it on.
Thank you, yes.
Don, you make sure.
Mr. President, I'd be happy to let the CFO know.
Thanks, thank you.
Appreciate it.
How do you find that?
That's a way to discourage the people to do the reading, I wonder how many people are actually reading those figures.
Okay, letter dated May 7, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting to amend the previously amended resolution dated July 24, 2013, with Howell Capital Markets, Inc., to provide financial advisory services to the City of Elizabeth, for an amount not to exceed $60,000, specifically to reflect an additional $20,000 as a result of unanticipated financial advisory services, thereby raising the amount of the contract to $80,000.
Any question?
Mr. President, question? What kind of financial advisory that was additional to what he was supposed to be doing?
Specifically related to bonds and bond refunding, and since there's been an increase in that activity this fiscal year, the CFO made the request accordingly.
Thank you.
Mr. President, okay?
Thank you.
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting to amend the previously amended resolution dated July 24, 2012, with Decatos Patrick &amp; Cole, LLC, to provide bond council services for an amount not to exceed $80,000, specifically to reflect an additional $20,000 as a result of unanticipated bond council expenses, thereby raising the amount of their contract to $100,000.
Any question?
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that Your Honorable Body consider the approval of a bond ordinance authorizing the purchase of a fire pumper for the fire department that would replace the fire pumper destroyed by fire, an amount of $500,000, with a down payment of $25,000.
You don't have that on?
No, no.
It's a, 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 it's[1272.81] 715-733 Pennsylvania Avenue.
Councilwoman, if you go, it's just right around the corner from Stop and Shop.
Right by Hand Place.
Right by Hand Place.
The little bridge.
Oh, okay.
It's this old, abandoned building that's been there for years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, okay.
I just.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick question.
Go ahead, Councilman Sedan.
I just want to share with my colleagues, the project they're planning here is actually a really good project. The building that's been there, I know Council President and I were able to see the plans. It's, the, the building that's been there has been abandoned for such a long time here. It's, it's been a.
Eyesore.
Eyesore, high weeds, the whole, whole thing. And one of the concerns I had personally was parking. So they're providing parking for 159 spots. And also it just creates the whole transit village atmosphere for the area as well. So I think it's definitely a big improvement for our city.
Thank you, Councilman. And I'll just add to that, as you noted, in the second paragraph, they talk about 200 construction jobs and at least 10 permanent jobs, which is a big, big thing for here in Elizabeth. As you know, we all advocate for trying to hire people from Eliz, especially from Elizabeth. And, and just to not belabor it, but iterate, we just opened law wide this past week. And they hired at least 55 residents from Elizabeth, which is a great testament for this city, okay? Put it on.
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider approving a financial agreement for a tax exemption for 30 years with Penn Ave Urban Renewal LLC, Care of Albino Secara, President, 715-733 Pennsylvania Avenue, that will provide an initial annual service charge to the city from Penn Ave U R in an amount that approximates $200,000 compared to the current $38,000.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider approving a tax exemption under the long-term tax exemption law for the Parker's Walk Urban Renewal LLC, Care of Community Investment Strategies in Lawrenceville, New Jersey, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a financial agreement providing for a payment in lieu of taxes on the property known as 202 Parker Road for the construction of eight new buildings with 76 units.
Any questions? Put it on.
Mr. President. My major question concerning this, I know in speaking with them just in the past, they, they really focus on, most of the money that they had was for the Irvington Avenue side, now for the Parker Road side. And here it clearly states that they're looking for 200, 220, and 230, which is going to be the next item, that they're going to do new buildings. Just want to confirm that that's for the Parker Road side.
That is correct.
Okay. So if you could just give us an update overall of changes.
I'll do.
Because I know, I know, I spoke with them and they, they were really making it seem, this was, of course, a couple months back, that the Irvington Avenue, they had the money to make that possible. But the Parker Road side, a lot of things were unsure. So I just want to make sure the Parker Road side is taken care of too.
I'll do, I'll do my best to answer that, because I'm not sure that I'm the guy that necessarily can give you the global picture of what's going on. What I know from this is, is that these applications are necessary in order for that, for the group to go out and get additional incentives from the state and other spies, which we believe to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million, which I think would give them additional resources to, to improve the Irvington Avenue side. That's my understanding. I can certainly get you more information as to, you know, what the exact, what the specifics are, but that, that seems to be where we are now.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
Councilman, you know, that's my understanding also. I guess to Tony DZ, the Reverend DZ, and he kind of said the same thing. The attorneys is just. Yes, Councilman.
What do we call to find out, to get more information? Who do you show we can call the director?
Well, let me just have a quick answer, quick. Remember we had assigned person from, this Phyllis, right? She's assigned designated from the city to go to person from the city to be, to see, I guess, I guess it is.
Yeah, but she doesn't, this is for the development. She was just there to interface with the residents and their concerns. But I think, and you can correct me, Councilman, you're talking about the development, correct?
Right, who are we going to get the right answer?
Not, not from that, from the resident.
Yeah, she's just there with the issues with the residents, like the elevator garbage.
Right, 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 okay.
I, I think the, the short answer from, from where I sit is probably the business administrator and the director of planning and community development. In conjunction.
Okay. Okay, Council?
That, that one.
Okay. Yes, all right.
I apologize. If we could just go back one second to the Pennsylvania Avenue project. I think the, the project is excellent. And I know that we had the opportunity to meet with them. I met with them with Council President. And I saw their graph of how they expect to get the monies like throughout the process. And according to their graph, once it hits like the 15th year, they would be able to maintain and be at a good standing. I'm totally in favor of supporting them, but I know they're asking for a 30-year pilot. I want to even throw on the table if we would be able to give them a 15-year. And then at the same time revisit it at that time if it's needed. According to what we saw, according to the graph at the 15th year, actually even before that, I think around the 12th or 13th, according to their numbers, they were already hitting the mark of where they're supposed to be. So I'm just concerned if, they're asking for 30, and if it's not needed, you know, for the best interest for our city, I would recommend giving them a 15. And then at that moment, like, you know, if they're not doing well, then we could reconsider doing another 15. But I, I'm very hesitant just going forward giving them a 30 right from the get-go, from the beginning.
Councilman, I'm, I'm just not comfortable commenting on that until, until you have a chance to speak with the CFO.
Okay.
I think that, that, I don't know that, that reducing a 30-year pilot to a 15 doesn't affect the, you know, the annual payments. And that's.
Okay. I understand what you're saying, honorable女士.
Would.
We could look into it.
I have, I have no problem leaving it as long as I get the information. I guess if we don't get it by Tuesday, if we could.
If you look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer. Requesting that your honorable body consider approving a financial agreement for a tax exemption for 30 years for the property located at 202 Parker Road with the Parker's Walk Urban Renewal LLC, Care of Community Investment Strategies, Lawrenceville, New Jersey, that will provide an initial estimated annual service charge to the city in an amount that approximates current revenues.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider approving a tax exemption under the long-term tax exemption law for the Heritage Village at Westminster Urban Renewal LLC, Care of Community Investment Strategies, Lawrenceville, New Jersey, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a financial agreement providing for a payment in lieu of taxes for the property located at 230 Parker Road to construct a four-story building with 72 units for senior citizens.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 7, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider approving a financial agreement for a tax exemption for 30 years for the property located at 230 Parker Road with the Heritage Village at Westminster Urban Renewal LLC, Care of Community Investment Strategies, Lawrenceville, New Jersey, that will provide an initial estimated annual service charge to the city in an amount that approximates current revenues.
Questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 6, 2013, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with the County of Union for the City of Elizabeth to be established as a county work site to provide volunteer interns through the State Department of Labor to perform work-related duties at various sites.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 6, 2013, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting to amend Chapter 7.52 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled Retail Food Establishments, specifically to more accurately reelect the business establishments operating within the City of Elizabeth and the establishment of a late fee and reinspection surcharge.
Any questions?
Letter dated May 6, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to provide a rental housing program, deferred payment repayable loan on the property located at 202 Parker Road in the amount of $571,877.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 6, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting that your honorable body determine that there is a need for low-income housing in Elizabeth, that the proposed project Parker's Walk Urban Renewal LLC, 202 Parker Road, to construct a rental housing development for low and moderate income families of up to 76 units will help meet this existing housing need and to utilize the attached sample resolution provided by New Jersey Housing and Norwich Finance Agency.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 6, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting that your honorable body determine that there is a need for low-income housing in Elizabeth, that the proposed project Heritage Village at Westminster Urban Renewal LLC, 230 Parker Road, to construct a rental housing development for low and moderate income families of up to 72 units will help meet this existing housing need and to utilize the attached sample resolution provided by the New Jersey Housing and Norwich Finance Agency.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 19, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Supreme Conditioning Systems, Inc., Hazlet, New Jersey, for the preventive maintenance and emergency repair service for heating, air conditioning, and automatic temperature control systems at various public buildings owned by the City of Elizabeth in an amount not to exceed $623,000.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 6, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting approval, change order number one for the contract awarded to JRC Construction Company for the Elizabeth City Hall front step slab repairs in the original amount of $62,500 to provide further for work required to expose unforeseen deteriorated conduit that was encased in the original step slab in the amount of $5,912, thereby raising the amount of the contract to $68,412.
Any questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Can we find out many times we've fixed in the front steps? I think the last time.
How much?
Can we find many times we've fixed them? Because apparently the last time was damaged due to somebody that was having some kind of, either festival or carnival. And if they do, they were supposed to be covered under the insurance policy set by any damage done by whatever people that were in charge. So can we get some answers, please? I mean, you could put them on, but, you know.
I, I'll look into it, but I think this one here, Councilman, was, was due to because of, what was it? Was it earthquake, or?
That's my understanding.
That's what I understand from the earthquake that we had back when we had it tremble, I guess what, a couple years ago? It was a couple years ago, you know?
Two years ago.
It was two years ago, yeah. So that's my understanding, Council, came from that, resulted that. And that's why, we can look into it, see how many times we have repair, okay?
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes.
Letter dated May 6, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting approval of change order number two for the contract awarded to our co-electrical contractors for Broad Street Improvement Area, Broad Street Streetscape, in the original amount of $1,957,883.50 to provide further for final quantities adjustments and negotiated additional work and represents as-built conditions in the amount of $237,877.94, which combined with previous change orders raises the contract to $2,349,002.40.
Any questions? Put it on.
Hey, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
I know we have so many change of order, change of order, but you're talking about a 19.98. Is this the final count that we're going to get, or after this we're getting another one?
This is the final count. The final.
It's the last one.
I believe this is the final, Council.
I didn't say.
I hope, I hope that is the final.
That's the, just want to say, the first time I've been asked that question, the first time I've answered it. I, I'm told that this is closeout punch list, final.
Last time, too.
Okay, believe, believe it to me, guys. I asked that same question this afternoon when I spoke to the public director.
But I am the ward councilman from the area of the Broad Street where all the work was done. I mean, and I agree.
But I understand this should be the last one, Council, so let's hope.
Hallelujah, let it be.
Okay.
Okay.
I won't keep them at the word.
May 7, 2013, from the City Engineer, recommending on behalf of Paddock Construction Company, Tinton Falls, New Jersey, to install a temporary site security perimeter bank and perform construction work associated with erection of the school within the reference right-of-way of Martin Luther King Junior Plaza, East Jersey Street, and Morrell Street for the construction of the new Elizabeth Academic High School as depicted on a plan entitled Academic High School Boundary and Topographic Survey, which is on file in the municipal engineer's office.
Any questions? Put it on.
Put it on.
Letter dated April 11, 2013, from the Director of Recreation, recommending awarding a contract to the State of New Jersey for the purpose of funding for the summer food nutrition program commencing on July 1, 2013, and ending on August 22, 2013, at no cost to the city.
Any questions?
Letter dated April 11, 2013, from the Director of Recreation, recommending awarding a contract to the State of New Jersey Department of Education sponsored management plan for the 2013 Summer Food Service Program commencing on July 1, 2013, and ending on August 22, 2013.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated April 11, 2013, from the Director of Recreation, recommending awarding a contract to the Elizabeth Board of Education for the purpose of providing food vendor services from July 1, 2013, through August 22, 2013, at no cost to the city.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated May 1, 2013, from the Police Director, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the cops hiring program grant to seek 16 new police officers to increase community police patrols throughout the city's six wards, improving the ability to address concerns and deliver services through creating collaborative working relationships with residents within an amount not to exceed $6 million.
Any questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I personally, I think it's a great idea, but this time with this money, I want to make sure that the director will assign two policemen to walk the area of the sixth ward, two for the second, two for whatever. People would like to see more presence of, put for our police department. I think we are very strong in detective and undercover agent in our city. They're doing a super job. But with this new hiring, some of them should be walking throughout the area, as they mentioned. And that should be going to the director. I'm sure that he's going to listen, at least to.
Certainly would make that recommendation, Council.
Thank you.
You know, you guys utilize the control. And you certainly would make that recommendation.
And, Mr. President, I would like to say I'm happy to see that we're applying for this. I certainly hope that we get it. Because I know our police department could use some additional personnel. And it's good for the city.
Yeah, absolutely, no questions. Put it on.
All right. A letter dated May 3, 2013, from the Police Director, requesting to establish handicap parking spaces. There we go. Second Ward, 551 Maple Avenue, personalized.
What does it say, reserved from?
Personalized, yeah.
It says reserved ago from 10, 2006?
They had a reserved, and now they want a personalized.
Yeah, put it on.
First Ward, 548 Marshall Street.
Old.
Sixth Ward, 615 First Avenue.
Old place.
Sixth Ward, 321 South Fifth Street.
Old.
First Ward, 442 Elizabeth Avenue.
Old.
Fourth Ward, 83 Westfield Avenue.
I'll give you the proof.
Okay. Fourth Ward, 103 Sheridan Avenue.
Old.
Fifth Ward, 483 Catherine Street.
Uh, old, old.
Sixth Ward, 37 D Hart Place.
Old.
Sixth Ward, 233 John Street.
Old.
First Ward, 320 Clark Place.
Old.
Okay. DeWesians R., 533 Green Street, 738 Line Street, 621 First Avenue, and 655 First Avenue. Okay, also Councilman Torres has requested to have placed on the agenda handicap parking at 71A Court Street, 11 Florida Street, and 226 Marshall. I have a letter dated April 30, 2013, from Heidi Castrion, President, Peruvian Cuisine for the World, Cliffside Park, New Jersey, requesting to host the third edition of the Festival of Peruvian Cuisine for the World PCW 2013 Festival, to be held on June 9 on Winfield Scott Plaza between East Jersey Street and Dickinson Street from 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. with a rain date of June 16, 2013.
Any question on that?
It's like, this looks like licensing, Mr. President, has.
Yes.
They approved this already?
Yeah, they approved it already.
So, do departments have any concerns with it, I'm assuming?
Well, as I know, Councilman, there's no, no concern at the time. Now, it's here for us to look at, review, and to let you know that they're paying a heavy price. Because I asked a question, you know, whether they are in charge of the art. It's such a bad amount of money, in $27,000, which is a good, you know, amount of money, so, not cheap. Okay? City home. And, you know, naturally got paid for the policeman, all that stuff, et cetera, et cetera. All right? Okay.
Okay. Councilman Grover requested to have placed on the agenda the Elizabeth Diesel Collaborative, housed at Future City, commending 25 residents, schools, and organizations for pioneering citizen science, environmental research, and education efforts on behalf of the residents and business community of the City of Elizabeth. And there's 25 there. Okay. Councilman Maza has requested to have placed on the agenda Memorial for Carlos Eduardo Figueroa. You have your Fair Rental Housing Board minutes of February 20, 2013, and now we have to go into a closed session.
Motion going closed session, please. This is a move, a second, move in second by, move in second. vocal. Ladies and gentlemen, we have to go into a closed session, so we can kind of excuse yourself for a few minutes. We welcome to come back when we complete this section. So take all your belongings with you. Now, if they step outside the door, they'll be completed.
Okay.
Once we complete, take everything, all your belongings, please.
Whereas the open public meetings act the 1975 chapter 231 for the extension of the public meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances present exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss a matter falling within the attorney-client privilege, minutes where the captain wants to discuss a matter involving confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore, we are resolved at the public's beeps from this meeting. Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
The President called.
What's around? Councilman Torres?
Yes, Mr. President. First, I received a letter from the Little House, which is located at 110 Third Street, asking for assistance with drop-off and pickups with the bus. Basically, what happens is there's cars, there's no signs there, and there's cars that park there. And the bus arrives to drop off and pick up the youth, the kids. Basically, they're in the middle of the street. So they're asking for assistance. We're putting up signs saying, no parking restriction from 7 a.m. to 9 a.m. and from 2 p.m. to 4 p.m. So I would like to submit this letter from the Little.
What's that, 110, what is it?
This is to 110 Third Street. I love that. The last several weeks, I've been asking for assistance for Front Street. And I know the lieutenant from traffic been helping with, with the study on Front Street near the soccer field, football field. I've been down there several times this week, and I can tell you, it is not where it should be. There's still many cars speeding. So I'm asking for the traffic study for three-way park, three-way stop signs on Front Street, at Magnolia, Magnolia in front, and Court in front. So it's the same system in front of the schools where they have several three-way park stop signs before you reach that intersection. Third is, there were, there were two young gentlemen who got drafted by the NFL that are from Elizabeth. I would like a letter acknowledging them from the city. Kasim Green from Rutgers.
You want a letter, you want a resolution?
Resolution.
Accommodation?
Accommodation, I'm sorry.
Accommodation.
Accommodation for Kasim Green.
Okay.
And his brother, Raymond Grant. They both were drafted to NFL. And last but not least, after several community meetings, I had several complaints about Heritage Village and Hope 6. I was wondering, the residents are asking for us to bring in the director, somebody from management about their needs. I know I made several phone calls, and we just keep missing each other. But the residents, our last month's meeting, I had 80 residents basically complaining about the youth and people in Heritage Village that don't live there with certain issues taking over that building. So I would like management, if we can, bring management here to address some of the issues that the residents are concerned about. And that's it, Mr. President.
Okay. Do you have those names of, for the accommodation?
Residents Village and Hope 6.
Yeah. What about the accommodation, what did they name?
Oh, yeah, Kasim Green and Raymond Grant.
And it was three, or two?
No, it was two.
Two, okay. Okay, so, Council. Councilman Keenan?
Thank you. Yolanda, thank you very much for these commendations. The St. Genevieve's Troop 23 will be celebrating its 50th anniversary in June. I'd like the accommodation for that. And Dan Bernier said that he would send you the information. Thank you very much, that's it.
Councilman Maza?
Yeah, Mr. President, there is a situation when they remove. Yeah, Mr. President, there is a situation when they removed the electrical pole about a year ago, a year and a half ago, and apparently, well, it was a public service that did that. We do have an ordinance on the book that the public service, as opposed to provide the repair, equal or at least equal or better than what it was before. For instance, if I have cement, concrete, public service comes, breaks another hole, lays a new pole, repulls the old one, and they need to put either hot patch, black tars or whatever, or they have to put cement, come back, because there's a couple sites, it's been a year and a half that I've been sending letters to Mr. Papey. Papey told me a couple days ago that it's not under his jurisdiction, but it will be under jurisdiction of Ray surrounding, building the, whatever title, it might be director, construction official. According to Mr. Papey, apparently, somebody have a diff here that doesn't go into one ear, it goes out to the other one, I don't know what's happening, but we have to act accordingly. I have two others in which I took a picture, I have evidence, and I do have a letter that I requested the director, because he told us at one time during the meeting, all the communications should go to Mr. Papey pertaining to public service, et cetera, et cetera. That was told to us right in this meeting, and I kept that as a record. Now, I have on South Street, 213 South Street, Mr. President, Yolanda, you might take the pole number 61572.
61572?
61572 in the front of 213 South Street. Public Service Electric is a big hall, if somebody passed by, they get hurt. Not only they're going to sue the landlord, they're going to sue the City of Elizabeth. And of course, I am a witness, because I mentioned to them that I would take care of it. It's been a year and a half, nothing happened. So whether the city's sleeping or the city's working, it depends. There's a night that's supposed to be sleeping, daytime is supposed to be awake. So let's get to work, Mr. President, you know what I mean? I mean, I'm from the old school, I sleep at night, on the one end, vice versa.
Council, do you have another one?
Yes, another one. 706 Fourth Avenue, pole number? Fourth Avenue. 63508 Public Service again, another big hall that needs to be, and there's about eight to nine inches of opening. We have a lot of senior citizens and children that pass by or whatever, they get hurt. Somebody's going to get sued, and Mr. Quest is an attorney, you are an attorney, I may have to hire you for that.
Should have never said that.
Now we're going to get. Number two, Mr. President, New Jersey School Buses Parking Residential Area. I know we have an ordinance on the book, I took pictures, some of them, they actually overpark at nighttime. Some people give me a plate number, this comes from one of my constituents, a plate number, so I think, let me go check. Well, I took pictures, I went there and I took pictures, one belongs to Volga, one belongs to Yolanda. I'd like to know what we have on the book and the ordinance, what is permissible? I mean, if you drop the kids to school, you have to go back to the garage. You don't go in front of somebody's property and you take five parking space and you're blocking the view of the song going inside the house. I mean, commercial, they're not supposed to be in residential area.
After nine o'clock.
After nine o'clock at night?
Yes.
But in the daytime, they allowed to block and take as many parks as they can, sir?
Yes, yes, sir.
Do we have that on the book? Or is just we?
Yes, that's on books.
Could I get a copy of the ordinance so I could show my constituency that the law says A, B, and C? And there's nothing that we could do about it, because they're very upset. You know, if I call the police department, I'm sure they're going to probably show some respect and go there, maybe issue my tickets, but anyway. Not too long ago, we did pass a law in which is pertaining to no parking from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. or from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. to allow that traffic to move out of Elizabeth and to come in on Elizabeth. I just received the first complaint for some of the residents, somebody that moved in Elizabeth, bought a property that was her dream to buy a property in Elizabeth, and now she gets ticketed every morning, just about every other days, because they have to move their car, and there's no parking space. I'm talking about 42 Chilton Street, in the area of Chilton Street. Somebody also called me and told me about, I used to go see my mother, my father inside, a senior citizen. Now, I can go park, because there's no parking in the area. Where are they going to go park in order to visit their relatives and whatever? So I remember we discussed, we put a moratorium for over a year, and then we went on, and we did approve.
We never approved that.
We never approved that?
No, sir.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to know, because I asked another councilman, and I think I was advised that it was approved, so it was never approved?
No.
Good, then we should have put a stop to the police department not to give out tickets, because this law is never approved.
That's correct.
I could probably recommend to this person to go before the judge and ask him for a refund of the tickets, if she paid the tickets, because it was never approved to do that. I mean, she's entitled to park legally, as long as she parks within the jurisdiction of 30 feet from the stop sign or 50 feet.
50 feet from the stop.
Whatever, from the stop sign, but she lives on Chilton Street, so I will let them know exactly. But I'm glad that, I will speak publicly to the director, let him know that easy on giving out tickets, especially in this area, that, you know, this person's, I think I made a big mistake to buy a property in Elizabeth, and so I will explain to her what's happening.
Certainly, Councilman, she has the right to appeal it, that ticket, and I'm not telling her what to do, but she has the right to appeal the ticket, so.
What I'm saying, Mr. President, if we do a moratorium for school, Ripley Play for school, whatever, 14, and I mentioned I would in favor of council, because the same treatment should be for school 12, for school 3, for school 15, you can't just pick and choose, because you're a nice guy. You go to church on Sunday, I go to church on Sunday, I don't get treated the same way. That's discriminatory at this point, so I'm saying we should be fair and reasonable to give out tickets. So I will let this young lady or young man know about it. I like the memorial for Vincenzo Campanella, which he died recently in his sleep, so I will give all the information, Yolanda, C-A-M-P-A-N-E-L-L-A. Okay, and I'll give you the whatever information, no rush, you know, we got time to do that. And, Mr. President, on the 18th of, I'm sorry, the 17th of this month, I'm having a spaghetti dinner, school number three, not for free. We need to raise money for our festival at Peters Town, and it's only $10 a ticket. You're all welcome to come, we'll give an introduction before the crowd.
That's a deal, $10. Could beat that. Does it have meatballs, though?
Definitely. Thank you.
Council question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I spoke to you about a week ago.
Yes.
And by the way, thank you for reminding me there was no meeting next Tuesday, I would have been sure. And I spoke to you about a resolution, actually, I have two resolutions I'm going to recommend tonight, but one specifically, I have copies here that a friend was able to make for us. If you permission, I'd like to distribute them. Very briefly, Mr. President, without going too deep into this, because it is a complicated issue, but young men and women who come to the United States at an early age, say, kids come to the United States at an early age, with parents that perhaps enter the country illegally. Those children are allowed to go to public schools, and as a matter of fact, there's a famous Supreme Court case, I don't remember the name now, but definitely those kids have legal rights and have protection under the law to attend public schools. Unfortunately, that only applies after a 12th grade. Once they graduate from high school, and George corrected me if I'm wrong, but once they graduate from high school, it becomes a little bit more difficult for them to continue in education because of their status. And let's keep in mind that a two-year-old, three-year-old boy or girl who came to the United States with their parents, it was not their choice, it was not their decision. So they really should not be punished for being here, they should be given the opportunity to go to school and become positive citizens and contribute to society. But unfortunately, after 12th grade, they don't have the same rights. As a matter of fact, in most cases, colleges and universities will charge them twice the amount of tuition, which is totally unfair. And I have met in my career as a teacher and administrator in Elizabeth, quite a few young men and women who would have done great in college and were not able to attend. There's pending legislation to support these individuals, and I guess it emulates or it follows the Dream Act, something President Obama has been trying to, how Congress support. And so these so-called dreamers can attend school after high school. There's legislation pending in the state. Municipalities like Jersey City and Passaic have adopted a resolution supporting the legislation, and I would like for us to do the same thing, because I think it's only fair. I think it's right to support these young men and women who, what they want to do is go to school, and this is what we want, we want our students to continue their education. So I would hope that my colleagues will support such a resolution, Mr. President.
Council question, I'd like you to know that this, we, he certainly, I support it. When we mentioned the immigration of the Dream Act that the President has put forward here, certainly, I support it wholeheartedly, so I'm hoping my colleague would also stand shoulder to shoulder with us and support this resolution, because let's face it, in America, we want to make sure all are truly, everyone is entitled to free education. So we, I certainly support this resolution. Any other counsel, I'd like to say a few words on behalf of them, just ditto, ditto.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really appreciate that. George has copies of similar resolutions that have been approved, and I really appreciate his support with this endeavor. I also would like to recommend another resolution that is not perhaps, might not be perhaps as popular as this one, but I think one that is necessary. As you know, I recommended a resolution about a year ago, when unfortunately, someone from the Board of Education, the person at the time, was arrested for falsifying information in a lunch application in order for her kids to get free lunch. Well, recently, four more individuals were arrested. It's really sad, board member and his wife, and two attorneys. The one attorney does not, he is an attorney that works for the board, but he's not the board attorney. I am recommending that we adopt a resolution asking the board that that particular attorney, Frank Apies, be terminated immediately, because it's really an embarrassment to the city and to the taxpayers, and I know there are allegations, but as I said, he's not one of the so-called regular employees of the board, so he should be really terminated immediately. The second attorney, Mr. Kirk Nelson, whom I know well, and has worked for the board, and has arguably has represented the board well, but he was also arrested. Now, because in this case, there are allegations, and I strongly believe that the person is innocent and not proven guilty, so I would request that the board places this individual on an administrative leave of absence pending the outcome of the investigation. But they should really take action immediately, because this is really a black eye for the community. And I really, as a former employee of the board, I'm very upset with this, and I hope that, I hope that the board takes the correct actions, and they have said publicly that they will, and that is encouraging, but I think if we adopt a resolution, ask them to do so. And by the way, in the past, when I have recommended resolutions regarding the Board of Ed, they do not include that resolution as part of their correspondence, and legally, they're required to do so. So I want to make sure, Yolanda, when Mr. Kennedy receives a copy, if we do this, I mean, I'm ahead of myself. If you agree with me and we adopt this resolution, it should be sent to the board secretary, because that should become part of the minutes, part of the, as we have, we do here. Whatever we receive, we incorporate it into our agendas, and the board really must do the same. I have to say, because I like to be fair, I like to say that if it's true what I heard today, I'm happy that the board finally has agreed to place the public speaking at the beginning of the meetings.
Hey.
If that's correct, I applaud them, and it's something that we encourage them to do, and I think that's a good thing, Mr. President. Let's see what else I have. I was wondering, well, I was wondering about an item we held last time, if it's going to be put back on the agenda, or are we still?
Yes, I think Councilman.
Sounds like you'll speak about that later?
I'm going to speak about that.
Okay, all right, finally, Mr. President, I'm happy to report that last Friday, Elizabeth Promise Awards, a scholarship program that I created seven years ago, we gave out 16 scholarships, and from students from the various houses or various schools, not only from the upper economy, but from Jefferson, from Madison, Holsey Dwyer, et cetera. And I thank all of you who had the opportunity to be there and support this event. It was by far the best attended, the dinner was sold out, and I'm really happy that we were able to give out 16 scholarships to kids from others with. So I thank all of you for your support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman, I certainly applaud you for your hard work and endurance for the scholarships and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And also, let you know that I will support you on the resolution for us, on the registration, I owe you a statement, I hope our colleagues will also join us in that endeavor. Councilman Sedanios?
I just have a couple comments. I first want to commend Councilman Questa for bringing out the resolution to support the immigrants. So many of the children, it's true, like, so many of the kids that we work with, they're not allowed to go to college, and it's unfair, like, you know, it's one of those things. They didn't make the decision to come to the country legally, and, but it's like a roadblock that they have in front of them that's unnecessary. I do want to let my colleagues know that Kirk Nelson is on an administrative leave. He is, so just in case. Yeah, so just want to make you aware of that as well. And I'm sad I didn't get to go to the event. I heard the event was great, and I heard the food was good, and of course, blessing the kids. I was planning to go, but I wasn't able to. Couple things, one is on Lower Road, the street right next to the cemetery, Hillside Cemetery, the one coming down, the county had placed the street light on North Broad Street, and when you come down Lower Road, they have a sign, "No Turn On Red." The problem with that sign, I have no problem, like, during the day, like, even if it would be something from 9:00 to 5:00, "No Turn On Red," but that light takes forever. So let's say if you're driving and it's like 8:00 p.m., literally, the cars, they have to sit there, wait for that light to turn when there's really not too much traffic. So I would love a letter to be sent out to see if they could just change it. It's okay for it to be "No Turn On Red," but just during a certain hours, let's say 9:00 to 5:00 or whatever, they think it's appropriate, but for it to be 24 hours a day, it's really unnecessary, and it's become a headache. From the other standpoint, the cars go all the way down Lower Road sometimes, because that "No Turn On Red", I like, I understand, like, sometimes during the busy time period, but I'm more referring to the other hours of the day. I wanted also, I know George had mentioned, to bring up to your attention, with Robert Morris, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., no parking during school day, just wanted to see if we would be able to add that.
Yeah, I still haven't received any emails from anyone regarding any of the schools and the parking situation, so I still.
So that would be my first, first one?
Can you please put it just in?
Oh, put it in writing?
Yes, just email, so I can include all that stuff when we send it down.
Not a problem. It was brought to my attention, I know many of us went to the parade recently with the school, and it was brought to my attention, a situation, and I, you know, I said I'll look into it, just because, I even mentioned just the fact that there must be some miscommunication, and from my experience, as the mayor's always been fair when it comes to events like that for the community, but the fire department, they were invited to come near the end of the parade, to come with their trucks, and it was notified to me that they were told not to come, like, kind of like, it was told not to come. And I pretty much said, "Look, let's look into it, could be just miscommunication." But I know for the most part, for all the parades, the fire department, you should come near the end. So just wanted to find out what occurred, you know, just to be able to give them an answer. Just because I know how I mentioned, for the most part, like, you know, the mayor is fair, you know, when it comes to things like that, so I just want to be able to relay something to them. And last but not least, I don't know if any of the other council colleagues have this issue, but I want to see if we could revisit, like, the noise ordinance, simply because, like, I know sometimes there's certain instances that they blast music. I know there's this one business, and believing we've been vetoes on it and everything, but as early as like 8:30 in the morning, they bring out a speaker on the sidewalk, and they're blasting music, there's residential above and throughout the entire day. And they were told that, you know, the police officers, they would attend, they would show up and, you know, they wouldn't give a summons, but they would warn them and they would never change their habit, their pattern. Then when they, when the inspector came out as well, they got creative, they brought in the speaker inside the store, but lowered the windows, they put the speaker right at the window. So it's just, it's just, I know that they were told by certain police officers, just not anything you could do during the daytime. From my recollection, from reading the ordinance in the past, like even though it says specific hours, it's really any time. But at the same time, I don't know if there's any teeth in that ordinance to really give a ticket.
I'll have to review it now.
Yeah, it's just, you know, just to give the police the support also, like, you know, when they go out, just to be able to give a ticket. So that's pretty much it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Questions?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just want to, I appreciate the fact that Councilman Sedenya recognizes that the mayor is pretty fair about all these events. I don't know what happened with the fire department, so I really can't comment about that. But I will comment about the fact that many of us, I wasn't able to attend this, I was ill and was not able to attend this last parade, but many of us attend the parade to support really excellence. I really believe that there are a lot of wonderful things happening in the school district. There are certain things I'm not crazy about and everybody knows that, but I do believe that there are certain things that are really good that are happening and we should applaud and recognize those things. But I think it is extremely important for members of the board who organize this parade and similar events to recognize the fact that as city founders, we also should be recognized. And when we participate in a parade like that one and we are not introduced, we're not recognized, that is really wrong. Now, I have attended Board of Ed meetings where they have actually recognized elected officials from other towns and I'm sitting there and they don't say Frank West is here. So I think I agree with the councilman, but we have to really make sure that the message the board sends, listen, we're really celebrating excellence. This is not about politics. So even if I disagree with a particular councilman, I'm gonna recognize him or recognize her because they are elected officials. And to me, that's protocol. To me, that's something that I, many a times, for example, when we take the oath of office January first, there are members of the board in attendance and the mayor always recognizes them because he knows it's the right thing to do. So I really, I really hope that for future parades or future events, the board remembers to also, you know, recognize those of those elected officials who attend and actually support the parade.
Councilman, like Councilman Rais, I'm gonna, who want to, Councilman Sedenya?
I get another attorney.
Just one second.
No, no, I'm sorry.
No, you don't get the attorney.
Yeah, I have a couple of things, thank you, Mr. President. With respect to the Elizabeth Tourism District that Councilman Quest raised, I had not heard anything, a response back. I did, until today, when I saw something in writing that was dated as of yesterday that I think was sent to Mr. Travis Saddle. So I just got it this evening, I had not an opportunity to look at it. I don't know if it answers all the questions that I had or not, but I think it does it because I said at the last meeting, I raised some questions, but that I had other questions and nobody ever got back to me that asked me what those other questions were. So I'm not sure what this is responding to. So I need an opportunity to look that. Now, if, once I look at it, if I don't have a problem with it, I don't have a problem with putting that on, Mr. President.
I would ask you to review the comments that you have received, you and I have been in the conference over the last couple of weeks in terms about this resolution. So what's your review, would you contact?
Yeah, I got an opportunity to look at it. Again, if I don't have a problem with the responses, if not, what I will do is I will get in contact with Mr. Travis Saddle and raise the issues and concerns that I have with the response or if my additional questions are not answered as a result as well.
Very well.
Councilman Zaloz, I just wanted to mention that Gordon Haas, who, as you may have noticed, was the party that answered the questions, he's away in Jerusalem, will probably be away for another three weeks or so, but he has offered to accommodate as best he can to get you the answers I need.
Yeah, okay. Now, I appreciate it. Like I said, I saw it, it dated for me yesterday. So of course, I couldn't have gotten it any sooner than, you know, today, I guess, since it didn't get till yesterday.
Review it and get your answer.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a request from a resident who had been a constable. Unfortunately, he had to let it lapse due to some personal reasons. I'd like to place it again as a constable. I just wanted to bring up as well, I had recently, this past week, residents contacted me because they were people out soliciting for money in residential neighborhoods. My understanding is that that's a gray area, there's, it's a police issue. The police did respond, responded twice in fact, and they were out there canvassing nine, almost ten o'clock at night. They did have some identification, they said they were looking for money for a children's institute of some sort. These people were from out of town, from Pennsylvania, looking for money for these organizations here on the streets of Elizabeth. I spoke to the chief license inspector about this. He indicated to me, we don't have anything in the ordinance except for political and religious canvassing. And of course, they don't look for money. They're looking for membership or for their candidacy, what have you. And the only other thing that's on the books in terms of permits are those street solicitations where they go on the corners and they ask for money from, you know, motorists and what have you. So this seems to fall into a gray area. I'm not sure how far the police can go in terms of enforcing this. If we can, if we have anything that requires them to provide us a notification if they're gonna come into town, it doesn't seem like there's anything on the books. And if not, in a case like this where the police responded twice, the first time when they responded, they got the information, they had some identification and stuff, so they gave them a warning. All they did was go around the corner and half hour later, there were other residents recording, you know, about the same problem. So it really didn't get resolved. The police responded on both occasions, by the way. But of course, you know, one didn't know what the other had done already, so I don't know what we can do, maybe we can look into it to see what can be done to prevent that. And I don't know if it's happened in other areas, anybody's heard anything about it, but just this past week, I got these calls, Mr. President, and that's all that I have.
So we look into it?
Yeah, I'd like to see if there's any...
And then we have to, and then the ordinance, we can't?
Yeah, either add something to the ordinance or give the police more authority to do other things other than giving them a warning, I don't know. But I'd like to at least have them let us know, let the police department, let the city know that they're gonna be doing things like that. So this way, we're aware of it. And if people call the police, then they can say, okay, you know, these are the people that are able to be out there and do this.
Councilman Rais, quickly.
Yeah, Mr. President, on what Councilman Quest and Mr. Sedenya about the parade, I actually noticed there were two brooms at the end of the parade. I was very disappointed because of a lot of children in the area. Usually, you do have our fire department, they like to see the lights, our police department, two, three radio calls, you know, put the siren, it's good for the children, they love to see that. It's a good relation, children versus respect for our family, police officers and our firemen. So whether this was a mistake or we're gonna do the same thing with the Portuguese parade, with the Colombian parade, with the Puerto Rican parade, so they don't have to participate, or we have to participate, we are a family, Board of Education and the city. Just because two people that aren't getting along, it doesn't mean it's the right thing to do and retaliate back and forth. So I think everybody should be treated the right way, respect what is due should be given, put aside all politics.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Sedenya, quickly.
Really quick, just want to say, I agree.
Quickly, quickly.
Yeah, give me a couple seconds. I'm not that fast. I just want to say, like, certain, certain things in our city really has to be, just respecting everyone, politics aside, when it's something for the community, family-oriented, whether the city sponsors it or the Board of Ed, let's just put that to the side and just honor everyone. Just want to add to the memorial, Miss Idella LaPierre, LaPierre, she passed the... Oh, we did? I'm sorry, so that's it, thank you. I know, I slept at two o'clock this noon.
Just one more thing I'd just like to add in terms with respect to the parade since they're raising that. I was, I did attend the parade myself and it was, it was a great parade, you know, and the kids and the parents and everybody was very happy. And I did feel bad, I was one of those that was there when they were making the announcements and myself, Councilman Torres was there and a few others, and we were not recognized at all. And we were standing right next to the podium where the commissioners from the Board of Education were. And I just think that it just was not right for them not to acknowledge us at all. In fact, there was a comment made that elected officials were opposed to the parade and that's not true.
At least not, we wasn't that...
At least not these elected officials.
Okay. I'm not gonna elaborate too much on that, I'd let you know that I was part of the parade also and I, you know, I've gotten used to that, matter of fact, not being recognized by the officials from the Board of Education when we participate. I know Councilman Quest made a statement also, I have been in that president and they will be sitting there and hoping that they'll recognize you, but to no avail. But, you know, that's okay. God knows best and it will take care of those things in good time. So after that, I'm not gonna go back again, I'm gonna do it a second time. Have a motion to John?
Motion to John.
Motion.